We are live.
Great. All right, council. I'd like to call this committee of all meetings for February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five to order with adoption of the agenda. Council Palmer, seconded by Council Luza, all in favor. Motion's carried. Adoption of the minutes of the committee of all from January sixteenth, Council Palmer. Let's lose out. All in favor. Motion's carried. Any business arising from those minutes? And then I'll just move on to announcements from the mayor. Just want to remind everyone again, winter carnival opening is tomorrow, Friday. Valentine's Day, four P M. Down at Centennial Park near the boat launch. Moving on to delegations and presentations. And we have Quentin Schmidt here from Community Wildfire Resiliency Plan. We don't. Do we have Quentin here? No.
Hi there. Sorry, my, the, the name is coming up as Bruce Blackwell, but.
Okay, good. Awesome, Quentin. I'll turn it over to you. Let you do your presentation. Thank you.
Sounds good. Can you hear me okay in the room? Is that volume gonna work?
It can. Please turn it up.
I'll just share my screen. I'll share my screen here as well.
Thank you.
Just so we're on the same page, folks can see the main slide of the PowerPoint there.
That's correct.
Awesome. I'll continue then. Thank you very much for having me today. As mentioned, my name is Quentin Schmidt. I'm a registered professional forester with B A Blackwell Associates. And I'll be presenting on the Community Wildfire Resiliency Plan, which we've created for the city of Revelstoke today. So just a quick introduction to the Community Wildfire Resiliency Plan or C W R P. This is very much a strategic level planning document. A portion of the plan is dedicated to assessing and updating the local wildfire threat to Revelstoke. And the latter half of the plan provides an action plan for the community to help increase their wildfire resiliency. The information within this plan will help support funding applications for things like Fire Smart and fuel treatments in the coming years. And generally, the plan itself has a shelf life of around five to seven years. And you can see this plan we've created was an update to a a previous plan from two thousand and fifteen. Just quickly, I'll touch on the goals and objectives of the C W R P. First, the overarching goal is to increase the efficacy of fire suppression and emergency response in the community. Second is to reduce potential impacts and losses to property and critical infrastructure from wildfire. And third is to reduce potential impacts. Sorry, potential wildfire behavior within and adjacent to the community. So as there was a previous plan from two thousand and fifteen in the community, the city has taken some good steps, some proactive steps since that plan was finalized. Just touch on a few of those here. So for starters, a Fire Smart Coordinator has formally been hired in the community. And the individual has expanded various Fire Smart education initiatives throughout the city. Also established a program of home assessments and debris removal programs and Fire Smart rebate programs. Community has also created Fire Smart webpage, which provides Fire Smart education materials to Revelstoke residents. A Wildland Fire Interface Tactical Plan was developed by the Emergency Management Program. Meeting from two thousand and twelve through two thousand and sixteen, a Community Wildland Fire Protection Committee met as an internal working group. A number of fuel treatments were completed by Parks Canada along the Parkway and the Inspiration Woods Trail. And feasibility and efficacy of a number of landscape level fuel breaks was reviewed by the B C Wildfire Service. And finally, the plan itself was made publicly available and an update to that plan was scheduled. So now I'll share the the area that we focused on for this C W R P project. Generally focused on the Wildland Urban Interface. So it's the, it's quite a busy map on the right there, but it's the area outlined in red. This is generally one kilometer buffer from the municipal boundaries where there are a certain structure density. It encompasses just shy of seven thousand hectares. And it's important to note that just under a third of this area is private land, which we aren't able to assess as as quantitatively. And this really reinforces the need for Fire Smart on private properties, especially as these private properties is where the majority of the infrastructure based values at risk are in the community. And the community itself is surrounded by the national park and the resort lands, a number of recreation polygons, actively managed woodlots and community watersheds. So it really reinforces the need for collaboration for any kind of Fire Smart initiative. Just quickly touch on some fire history that we analyzed for the area. This map does show all historic fire ignitions from nineteen fifty. And it does show crosshatched areas of fire perimeters for some larger fires that have burned since the nineteen twenties. So since nineteen fifty, about a third of the fires in this five kilometer buffer were human caused. About fifty percent of them have been lightning caused and a number are attributed to unknown causes. But seventy percent of the those larger fire events have all been human caused. Part of the plan, we derived a local wildfire threat rating for this Wildland Urban Interface, which is shown on the map here. Map does show that approximately eight percent of publicly accessible land is high or extreme wildfire threat. Around forty eight percent of the area was assigned a moderate wildfire threat. And just under a third of that public area was assigned a low wildfire threat. So just move on to the second portion of the plan now, which is the action plan. The plan itself, we've outlined thirty seven unique recommendations. Each of these recommendations for the city was given a priority and it was given a rationale. We also shed light on who some of the lead parties might be for implementing these recommendations, as well as what a realistic timeframe might be for accomplishing that, as well as shedding light on the available funding source to implement these recommendations. The thirty seven, they're, they're rooted in the seven provincially recognized Fire Smart disciplines. Each of these categories will be going through in detail in the following slides. The first set of recommendations falls into the Fire Smart Education discipline. The objective here is to continue providing information to Revelstoke residents and visitors to empower them to adopt and conduct Fire Smart practices to reduce potential negative impacts of wildfire to their homes and to the community as a whole. Specifically, these education recommendations deal with hosting Fire Smart workshops, distributing educational materials, incorporating this into schools, and also communicating Fire Smart initiatives and fire hazard, both internally and externally. The next set of recommendations looks at legislation and community planning. So different avenues where the city of Revelstoke can implement wildfire risk reduction through various laws and legislation. Specifically, we've recommended enacting a Fire Smart landscaping bylaw, communicating various bylaw controls of fire risk, potentially looking at altering restrictions on tree removals, and looking at managing public park spaces proactively. The next set of recommendations deals with development considerations, which is one overarching recommendation here, which is to enforce Fire Smart development. So embedding Fire Smart practices and considerations into development. Next set of recommendations has to deal with interagency cooperation. So broadening from a single jurisdiction approach to, to a larger and broader and more risk driven multi agency approach. Specifically, we've recommended continuing to collaborate externally. So reestablishing the Community Wildland Fire Protection Committee. Recommending expanding internal collaboration across different municipal departments, and also pushing Fire Smart landscaping at, at local nurseries and with local contractors. Next, we have set of recommendations that deals with cross training and fire department resources. Specifically, these are to continue staffing Fire Smart positions, expanding Fire Smart training and wildfire training in the community. Ideas to demonstrate structured protection, as well as hosting scenario based training between the fire department and the wildfire service. Additionally, we've recommended increasing water shuttling capabilities and fire department staffing, and increasing the department's wildfire gear and vehicle allotment as well. I know I'm tight on time here. I'll move quickly through this next little bit. The next set of recommendations has to deal with emergency planning, which focuses on distributing wildfire evacuation checklists, increasing the usage of the alertable software, looking at ways to address wildfire smoke concerns in the community, and ensuring that backup generators are procured for, for things such as critical infrastructure. The final set of recommendations has to deal with vegetation management. This is split into fuel management treatments and the larger land base, and then residential Fire Smart. Terms of fuel management treatments, we're recommending specific areas to plan and implement fuel management treatments. We think there are opportunities to utilize a provincial funding program to help clean up certain municipal greens municipal green spaces. And we're also recommending looking at options for grass management in the drawdown zone. Quickly, this map on this slide does show twenty three unique fuel treatment areas that have identified. The plan itself details each of these units. Each of these units has a different objective for why we've recommended it, and we've shed light on different complexities or constraints that come with each of these. Terms of land managers for these areas, there is a variety. There are only five of these units that do fall on municipal land or, or common property within the city of Revelstoke. Reinforces the, the need for collaboration. Finally, the set of recommendations deals with expanding residential Fire Smarting opportunities when it comes to vegetation management. Specifically, conducting home ignition zone assessments and establishing Fire Smart neighborhood recognition. Also looking at providing Fire Smart rebates and coming up with ways to assist with debris disposal for homeowners. These same recommendations apply to critical infrastructure within the community and community assets as well. Thank you. I, I do think I'm a little over time. It's usually a half hour presentation, so I apologize if I was rushing through things, but I'm happy to take any questions that, that you might have.
Great. Thanks, Quentin. Appreciate the presentation. I have just a couple of questions here as we move forward, but just going back to the beginning of your presentation, you were talking about wildfire threat. And you had some numbers, eight percent higher extreme, and then forty eight percent moderate, twenty eight percent low. What puts us in a high or extreme threat? Is it the density of the trees around the community? Or can you just elaborate just a bit on that?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for the question. I think that's a, a great question. And so this threat rating itself is derived, it has a number of things that go into it. It incorporates topographical conditions. So steep, how steep is the slope? What's the aspect of the slope? Things like that. It incorporates fuel type conditions. So exactly like you mentioned with how dense is the forest? How much dead falls on the ground? How tight are the trees? Things like that. And then it also looks at various climatic conditions as well. So those higher threat areas, generally what we found in the Revelstoke area had had to do with steep areas was, was a very large driver for that. So steep areas, but also young and dense conifer stands. So more conifer dominant forest that it was land that had been cleared loosely in the last sixty years or so and had regenerated as a dense stand. So a lot of those dense stands where those are located on steep slopes, those were some of the most high and extreme threat areas.
Okay, thank you for that. And so when we start to initiate some of these recommendations here, that's pretty much on us, the city, to implement that sort of thing. So what I'm, I'm thinking now, you mentioned about the types of grasses in the drawdown area south of town, which is a B C Hydro area. Is that something that we would take on or, or our wildfire, Fire Smart people would take on with B C Hydro to discuss those things? Or how's that work?
Exactly. So our, our main touch point for this project has been Lauren Marfleet, who's the Fire Smart Coordinator for the community. She will largely be the one kind of tasked with pushing these recommendations forward. And in an area like that drawdown zone, where I do recognize it's, it's Crown Agency, it's held by Hydro. So it would absolutely be a conversation between Lauren and the, the land manager in that case.
Great. Appreciate that. And my last comment, just to beg Lauren do the Fire Smart on my property. And, and twenty plus years ago, there wasn't this sort of recommendations as far as landscaping. So I'm going to end up taking up most of my landscaping, or I'll burn my neighborhood down. And so appreciate the fact that you've made comments in there about going to the local nurseries to bring in Fire Smart plants. Counsel, any questions or comments from any of you? Counsel Palmer?
Thank you, Mayor Souls. And thank you, Quentin, for the presentation and the information. I do have a few questions, I guess, from the start. So these thirty seven recommendations, I guess that's in another report or other than what's you presented today?
Yes, correct. So the, it's table one, and it's in the executive summary of the Community Wildfire Resiliency Plan document. So there's a Lauren would know better than me, but I think it's about a ninety page document. But the first table right at the front is the executive summary table, which has the thirty seven recommendations and, and all the detail that are associated with those.
And Mayor Souls, maybe you could just remind me, how how did we get to the point of doing this? And just like, was this a city initiated study?
All right, Quentin, I'm gonna ask that question of you. It was through Lauren that basically started this process. Is that correct?
Correct. So Lauren did begin the process. This is a, so the development of Community Wildfire Resiliency Plans is able to be funded provincially, and this was funded provincially. And a prerequisite for getting future funding is to have an active C W R P in place. So, and active means to the previous five years. And so this was a, an initiative that Lauren had looked at. It's funded through the U B C M's Community Resiliency Investment Program. So.
Thank you. Yep. So, and then the Fire Smart Coordinator, is that a city of Revelstoke? Position, a contract position, employee position?
I believe it's under the Fire Department. I believe it's in Agen.
No, it's Lauren. Lauren's actually on.
Lauren, because we had a meeting last week. Sorry, Lauren.
I can speak to that. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please, Lauren.
Okay, perfect. So basically how this all came about was is the fire chief wanted to start Fire Smart within the city of Revelstoke, seeing that there is a chance of wildfire here. And a lot of communities have brought on Fire Smart, Smart Program. And he asked me if I would be willing to be a, the Fire Smart Coordinator for the city of Revelstoke and go through the whole funding grant process and everything. So my position currently is grant funded a hundred percent.
Two questions, Counsel. Uh, yes, in part. Thank you, Lauren, for being here, because that was one of the questions I had. It's, it's important. Thank you. In the the fire, the coordination or the relationship between the Fire Smart, Smart Coordinator and our Emergency Management Coordinator. How, how does that happen? Or what? Or is there?
Lauren, can you elaborate on that?
Sure.
Yep, go ahead.
Sure. So right now, our emergency program coordinator is Dave Moan. He works out of the Fire Department here. And in the future, there has been discussion of combining the Fire Smart Coordinator and the Emergency Program Coordinator position. That has yet to be seen, but it, it is something that is also done in other municipalities as well.
Thank you, Mayor Souls. So in the report, there was, said the committee met from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and sixteen. Do, do we know why that stopped happening after that point?
I heard that the, there was a Fire Smart Coordinator of sorts before, whatever they called it back in two thousand and fifteen, and that they had fallen ill. And I don't know if they were able to get somebody else to fulfill that role. And that's all I've heard about it.
Okay, that basically sounds like a tell off.
Yeah, and I think that person might have been involved with E S S at that point as well. And then it was after that that I got involved.
Right. And then on the report, so Quentin, you, you briefly talked about the importance of interagency coordination. Can you, is there in the recommendations, thirty seven recommendations, is there specific action items on that interagency relationship?
Yeah, and thank you very much for the question. So yes, there is, there's a, I believe there is five. I'm just gonna look for a specific number here. There is three specific recommendations we made to help expand the amount of interagency cooperation that goes on. A large part will be that external collaboration, which, which might look like reinstating that wildfire working group. We've detailed who we believe the, the different groups and different stakeholders are that should be involved with that group. Now, the other recommendations deal with looking at ways that different municipal departments can come together to discuss some of these concerns. So how, for example, how can the planning and development departments start to work with the Fire Smart Coordinator and the Fire Department? And things like that. So does that answer your question?
Uh, yep, in general. Then my next question, sort of further down in your reports, kind of in a sub note, you talked about scenario based training. One of the concerns I've had for a number of years now is the lack of exercises, real exercises. So when I look at this report, it feels heavy on the documentation, planning. Not a criticism in itself, but kind of buzzwords. It makes us feel good. I, I, that scenario based training and actually having, whether that's tabletop or actually full integrated, integrated emergency response exercises, interagency. Do the recommendations go into those specifically, or is it more kind of general?
Slightly on the general side, but we have recommended specific training opportunities that there might be for that. So we have dealt with a number of communities before, and Revelstoke is very interested with that scenario based training between the Fire Department and the wildfire service. So practicing different, kind of different situations and ironing out some of those wildfire response complexities that come with it. That is one avenue that we're recommending. And then also that, that type of training can involve the emergency management personnel within Revelstoke as well. So the, the lead parties for those collaborative pieces are all there. And we did speak with all of them as part of this as part of developing this plan. And they're all very interested with, with continuing to keep these relationships up and, and continue to attend scenario based things such as that. So, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Quentin. Thank you, Mayor Souls. So just finally, I, I'm, I'm really pleased that we have this. I think it's just our questions are heightening that you know, the communications and what we know at the council table is, has been lacking in the past. So since two thousand and sixteen, it appears. And so this is a movement in the right way. I, I, I really look forward to hearing more action oriented things, so that they were fully prepared. This is a little step, and I, I, I think is exposing weaknesses. Thank you for those that have been involved and, and for the, the staff or whoever initiated the grant funding, finding that and moving along. So I'm, I'm pleased about that. I, I think we can. You know, when we see all the fire issues that have happened in Clona last year, California this year, it's more and more. And so I think this is really important starting point of being more proactive for what might be an admirable wildfire in our community. Thank you.
I agree. And thank you for that comment, because this is a great way to start. And then as we start to see what we would call scenarios being played out. Actual physical scenarios is what I'd like to see, where we're seeing that training and and those scenarios out. And I haven't been part of that sort of thing in years gone past. There's nothing better than hands on experience to learn some of those things as they come up. So that's a good way. And I think Lauren will be able to have that conversation with her colleagues at any other comments, Counsel Ronaldo?
Uh, thank you for the chair. Thank you, Quentin. Thank you, Lauren, for the presentation today. I just have one question. It's probably more directed towards staff. I'm wondering if we can sketch out the roadmap ahead towards prioritization, implementation, budgeting, grant seeking, action plan based on this report. What, what are we going to be seeing at the council table? What is the community going to be seeing the next year, two or three in terms of taking the report into action items and building on what we've done so far?
Lauren?
Um, okay, great. I, I really like this question, because this is everything I've been working on for the past little while. So now we have a, the C F R C committee. And they've had this presentation from Quentin as well. They are well aware of this report. And really, it's going, we're going to be tasked with going through this report, prioritizing, bringing things toward, before council, and working together to try to get through some of these initiatives. So I'm, I'm going to be working closely with my committee to try and, and find out what our priorities are and ensure that our grant funding is always kind of one step ahead and on its way type of thing. And so that we can make sure that this program stays buoyant in our community and is a priority. And as things are getting actually completed on this report, it would be really a shame to have this report just kind of go by the wayside and nothing be done with it. So I, I think having this committee will really ensure that things are going to continue to move in the right direction.
Follow up, Counsel.
No, thank you very much, Lauren. I really do appreciate it.
Counsel Palmer, you have another question?
Yeah, so just following on that theme. So does this committee exist today?
Yep. Yep. Counselor Stapenhurst, does Chair that come in?
Okay, right. Okay. So that, that's that newly formed committee. Okay. And just for clarification then, uh, the CSRD component, are they, they're part of this committee?
And there's nobody sitting from CSRD on your committee?
John, not that.
Yes, yeah, yes, there is. Yeah, we do. Um, we do have the fire smart coordinator for, um, the CSRD on our committee as well. Um, they're not a voting member. So the members of the public are voting members in, in this committee, but we have a lot of, um, outside organizations and things like that to provide insight and help to the, the members of the public that, that are the voting members.
Great. Thanks, Lauren. Go ahead.
Yeah. So just a thought, uh, or a consideration, not for debate here right now, but I, I'm just wondering if there would be some wisdom in having, uh, inviting, uh, Director Brooks Hill, uh, to, to be, sit on this committee as well. Cause of the overlap, his areas totally surrounding that, that's, so it's just a thought.
Yeah. And Lauren, I'll let you discuss that. Is it Mr. Southernland that's sitting on the committee with you or?
I know her name is Sophie Randall. And I know that there was discussion within the CSRD. So I did approach them with an open invitation on who do you want to sit on the committee? Um, and that's who they've given me to come to, to the committee meet, meetings. Uh, and I'm sure if things arise that she needs to go back and talk to the other people at, at the CSRD about, she certainly will as well. But, I mean, I can always suggest um, somebody else there, I guess, too.
Well, our director for area B is Director Brooks Hill. I'll have a conversation with him about that, Lauren. I don't know what his capacity is, um, but I sit as a municipal director on the, uh, on the CSRD and Counselor Stapenhurst is my alternate. So I think we've got that covered, but I'll have a direct conversation with Director Brooks Hill and see how he feels. Uh, I think we might've already had this conversation around the CSRD board table. And, uh, but I'll just, uh, I'll have that conversation again and then go.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council? Saint John, Quentin, thank you for your time today. Lauren, thank you for being here. Uh, we appreciate the presentation.
Excuse me, sir. I've got a fire commitment that I need to.
Okay, yes, thank you. And thank you for advising your area. All right, we are going to move on to, uh, Revelstoke Community Housing Society, uh, presentation. Mr. Otia, I want you to come forward.
Thank you, and thank you for having us today. Um, we have, we're joined by, uh, several board members from the Revelstoke Community Housing Society, and I'm the general manager, Tahatea. And yeah, I'll be reporting on the Reddit housing grant, uh, outcome and impacts. This was a period from April twenty twenty-three to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four that I'll be reporting on. I don't know if, um, the slides are available on, uh, that, that we submitted, but, uh, sorry, I, I didn't.
Ms. Delcelle, do you have a copy of the slides that you could present? Do you have that availability?
Yes, I can, Your Worship. One moment, please.
Thank you. Uh, I'll just give an overview of the grant because they're not, they're not extremely visualized, but they're helpful reference. So, um, I'll just get started as is. So, uh, high level objectives of the grant were to enhance the organizational capacity of the Revelstoke Community Housing Society and, um, realize the society as a developer and operator of housing. So, um, both, you, both, uh, bringing, you know, designs, concepts into built housing and then having the capacity to operate and, uh, and sustain and maintain that housing for, for, um, residents of Revelstoke to live in. And the second objective was to accelerate the, um, accelerate that development in Revelstoke. And, um, at the time in twenty twenty-three, this was, uh, seen as a next step to capitalize on other policy planning and, uh, as the, as the grant period, uh, went on, even infrastructure that was installed, installed on the Oscar streetlands. Um, and, and really, yeah, continue this forward with more development.
Great. So, Mr. Otia, just so you're aware, it is up on the screen. Should you need to refer?
Thank you. So the funding source, uh, was, of, of this was, uh, two installations. The first one was the, of a hundred thousand. Approximately the two hundred thousand dollars came from the B C Rural Economic Diversification and Infrastructure Program Reddit. And the purpose of this funding, broadly speaking, was to, um, enhance employment opportunities. And it was in recognition that at the time, um, and, and still housing was really capping the economic growth that we could see in the city. Um, that this was, you know, following COVID, we were really seeing that, uh, the influx of, of people to the community, but also the partial shutdowns of, of businesses, limited hours, things like that, that, that really demonstrated this, this is an issue. Um, the next slide is just a financial overview of the spending. Um, so we have salary and wages at eighty-six thousand actual, uh, compared to the eighty-five thousand budgeted. Um, the project planning, which we encompass, um, grant, grant applications, uh, and positioning us to, to be successful with those grants at twenty-five thousand six hundred sixty-one compared to, uh, twenty-five thousand budgeted. And then the consulting professional fees, uh, coming in a hundred and two, eight twenty-three, uh, as compared to the ninety thousand budgeted. Um, there was no additional funding issued, but these are just the comparables, um, of, of what the balance came, the balance came from, uh, society funds. Uh, summary of the expenditures on the next slide shows, um, that the compensation for a general manager from April to December made up the salary and wages area. That was, um, that was myself. That was, uh, that was my hiring in the, in, um, twenty twenty-four. And since the, and, and coming from CED where, um, I was involved with the housing society and with, uh, this, this grant, it, it was, um, I'm, I'm grateful for the opportunity to, uh, to continue that work forward. And I, I feel that we're, we're really starting to realize those results now. So, yeah, thanks again for the, the, uh, opportunity. The project planning, uh, aspects of this result resulted in feasibility studies, site evaluations and concept development for the Oscar streetlands. Um, all of these required for grant applications and, uh, in recognition that, um, grants are, are becoming increasingly competitive as the, as the grant landscape gets busier. And, um, the grant, the, the projects that are chosen are those that are de-risked the most, as in the most feasibility and, uh, substantial feasibility and and design has happened such that the projects have fewer risks and probably more design than would be, uh, than would be recognized as, uh, necessary or absolutely necessary in the private sector. So some of, some of this work, uh, is the grant structures that we're, that we're working within. Um, but in that, in that vein, we do see that, uh, we, we were able to, turn some of that into a successful grant application that will, that will feed back into, um, that design and development of, of, uh, twenty-two unit development on, on the Oscar streetlands. And that is really, um, that will really put us in a great position to, to bring units to, to fruition in Revelstoke. Uh, on the consulting and professional fees, we've got, um, development consulting, engineering and architectural services, um, uh, including energy studies, uh, community consultation, business planning, um, and municipal partnership support. Um, this was, this was, uh, we're, we're going to talk a little bit more about the business plan that we developed with, uh, with part of this funding, but, um, this helped us chart the organizational growth and, uh, establish the community housing societies O A P eligibility. Um, the, the, um, that, that will be, yeah, that, that required actually a lot of support from staff at the city of Revelstoke, which I'd like to thank for their, their involvement as well. Uh, on the next slide, so some of the outcomes were, like I said, the hiring of a general manager and then, um, following that, the redefining of the organizational governance model from a working board to a governance board and providing oversight and, and, uh, and maintaining that accountability of, of the nonprofit to our, to our mission and, and then to our funders. And so, um, by, by doing so, uh, really moving the, um, in, increasing the capacity to, to have more workflow through month by month, um, and really move more business through every meeting than using the time up at those meetings for, for, uh, working board, um, responsibilities. The development of a board handbook and updated bylaws, uh, was, was really critical to, um, mitigating some of the risk of, uh, potential future board turnover and onboarding, um, making sure that we are prepared to, uh, with those updated bylaws to move into a higher capacity, um, and, and more work and, and flow through of funds that are going to come with, um, additional development. In the operational improvement category, the, uh, the business plan, uh, was developed, uh, through a community housing transformation center grant. So this, uh, funding allowed us to really work closely with, uh, with consultants of, of, uh, that, that also supported the, the city with their planning around affordable housing development, um, strategy. And really brought us to a point, uh, as a, as a community of understanding what it would take to, um, to accelerate housing and what other models, uh, how, how our approach was comparing to other models across the province and how to implement that model successfully. And so, um, the business plan that was developed lays out a clear roadmap for the next, the next three years of how we can do so and, um, how to make that housing a reality. Uh, finally, this, um, yeah, led to the, the city Revelstoke partnership agreement and, um, working through the, the budget alignment and, uh, input gathering for the business plans. And then McCullough Development Services were able to, uh, making that a reality as well and submitting, um, submitting that to the city of Revelstoke. Um, next slide, we have some of the development outcomes, which, uh, we're, we're pretty excited about. The, the Downey Street development is by far the, the, you know, biggest news in housing out of Revelstoke for quite some time and, and actually, um, in the interior of B C as well. Um, the Revelstoke Community Housing Society, proud to be chosen as a nonprofit partner for this development. And, um, and we've now, um, just about concluded the, uh, the RFP for builder designer. So we will be evaluating those submissions over the next couple of weeks and should be moving ahead with, uh, with assigned, with a builder signed on, uh, soon after that. So, um, one, one critical step that, that hasn't been mentioned yet was, uh, prior funding that allowed, prior funding from the city of Revelstoke that allowed us to obtain, uh, past years of audited financials. So that, um, we were eligible to, to actually bid on such a large project. Um, the Downey Street one hundred and sixty-six unit project requires a higher level of financial accountability to be demonstrated. And so we, um, we anticipate that, uh, we're going to be moving through additional design to, to get to a building permit and, um, and we will be, um, yeah, we'll be discussing whether we can move ahead with a foundation permit and actual shovel in the ground in twenty twenty-five as soon as we have our signed on, uh, the design and, and construction.
And that, we can plan on that in a month or?
Plan on, oh, yeah, yeah. We've, we've got the golden shovel ready to go. And so, and, and then the, uh, the follow up to that is the twenty-two unit Oscar Street concept, which, which kicked all of this, this off. Uh, the rapid housing initiative was an opportunity that was identified in early twenty twenty-three. Um, as, as, um, yeah, a really, you know, it was a, it was rapid in its, in, in the length of time that we had to apply as well. And, uh, and by moving quickly, we were able to get a lot of, a lot of the preliminary work done. Um, unfortunately to realize that the, the grant was not actually, um, it wouldn't make fun, it, it wouldn't make financial sense to build with that grant in, in Revelstoke. There was a lot of contribution, uh, from municipalities that was being expected, but not necessarily expressed in the, in the initial grant, uh, publication. So, um, we, we pivoted and were able to secure grant funding, uh, more recently, uh, from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, and that's the hundred and eighty-one thousand grant that, uh, that we've secured now. Uh, next slide would be the challenges and lessons learnt. So we really started with a key challenge that was going to be, that was around scaling our organizational capacity to handle these large, larger scale projects. And, um, you know, the, the demonstration of this was really, uh, back in twenty twenty-three when I was still working for the city of Revelstoke and, and had started into the housing file. Um, having the opportunity to go and, and speak with representatives from B C housing on, on multiple levels, uh, allowed the identification of the Downey Street project being stalled, um, due to a perspective on local capacity that, that it didn't exist. And so the adding this, this grant funding, uh, into the, into the local nonprofit housing society, um, really gave, gave us the resources to invest into audited financials, things that, things that, uh, and staff capacity that I mentioned. And ultimately led to the, the Downey Street being, Downey Street project being realized. So that's, that's a, that was, you know, a challenge and one that, one that has, uh, been overcome, but is going to continue, we're going to be continuing to level up that organizational capacity as our, as our, um, as we continue growing. The, um, so the, the timelines again of the, of the RFP for the Downey Street project, where, where one of those lessons learned, we were able to respond due to having the S V. And, um, the importance of strengthening those governance operational frameworks, uh, were essential for, for really bringing us to a, to a level that we're at now. Uh, the next slide is just, uh, a summary of the return on investment from the two hundred thousand of Reddit funding. So between the two grants that have been secured so far during the, the grant period, um, the Reddit funding led to another, uh, dollar and every dollar led to another dollar and thirteen cents of grant revenue. And the long-term benefits are going to be realized through the accelerated delivery of the hundred unit, eighty-eight units that were directly impacted by, um, the, primarily by the Downey Street project and then the twenty-two unit, um, design, uh, funded, the funding for design of those twenty-two units. And, uh, can't forget those fifty new childcare spaces that are going to be part of the Downey development and that are, that are very badly needed by the community. A ju, a quick summary of some of our, our ambitions from the, uh, from the business plan. And we're, we're looking at those hundred and sixty-six, uh, units on Downey Street, uh, completed by twenty twenty-eight as, as our, you know, as our springboard to, uh, develop on Oscar streetlands. And, um, so, and then the property management is, is, these are the sort of stepping stones that we need to, to really scale our growth and be ready for this hundred and sixty-six units completion. Um, in conclusion, we've got, um, yeah, I would just say thanks again for, for this opportunity and, um, summarize that, uh, our enhanced capacity for housing development, um, and the direct impact on this hundred and eighty-eight units and fifty childcare spaces is, is, uh, is now be, is, is now moving ahead. And, uh, it's, it's an honor that I get to work on it and, uh, love to, love to see those as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Otia. I appreciate that. Um, you know, when we start thinking about and know that you're in the process of securing contractors, et cetera, that sort of thing. When we talk about anticipating. When we talk about anticipating shovel in the ground for this unit on Downey and the fourth, are we thinking that we might see something happening in fall or am I being premature while asking?
I would say, yeah, we we yeah, we're allowing for time to complete design, submit the building permit, and then looking at a foundation permit in quarter three of twenty twenty five.
Okay, thank you for that. Any comments from council? Councilor Palmer, you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Solz. I thank you for the presentation, the work that you're doing. Especially the Downey Street property. I mean, we've been holding our breath in the province and stuff for a decade or so. Exciting for getting there. Specifically, just for a little bit further to what the mayor was asking. So for it's it's a design build contract. And is is that awarded? The the design bill, is it awarded or is it still out for?
That's just just closed proposals and moving into evaluation of this proposal.
Okay, so you're in the evaluation process. Okay.
And yeah, what I can say is that we're very, very grateful. You know, we're glad to see that there are competitive, a number of competitive and looking forward to dig into this.
Just further on that, it once that's awarded and you have a sense about these more concrete details, whoever the successful proponent is of these timelines, it's kind of further to what the mayor is talking about, you know, that that question about the you know, being in the ground twenty twenty five is based on the timelines you have in here, hoping to have completion of Downey Street by twenty twenty eight, which I think is really ambitious. It would it would need to be started in twenty twenty five for that, I would think.
Yeah.
So it'd be interesting to see how that phasing and it's of such great community interest. It would be nice to have that update. I don't know if it'd be by the the successful proponent or not, but just seeing at least that, you know, that GAN charter, however they they're showing of the milestones as we move ahead.
Definitely, yeah, we would. Yeah, we would look forward to the opportunity to continue updating and make sure that that we're, you know, giving reports and and meeting with planning department regularly to make sure that that's communicated and understood by city staff and council.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Lucio.
Thank you, Mirials. Yeah, thank you, Tahaa, for coming and presenting. Question about the Downey Street project. From what I remember, it's three buildings. Is this going to be like phased with different levels of completion? Or are you trying to complete all three buildings at the same time?
So it'll both, just in just in terms of efficiency building. The idea is to have them phased so that they every trade sort of moves through sequentially. And so each building opening might be spaced out by a couple of months, just so that the finishing can be done on a building. And it allows us also to tenant those buildings as we go instead of having a hundred sixty units on on the same day. It's still a push, but it allows us to to do that over a series of, you know, probably six months from beginning to end of the opening of phases one, two, three.
Yeah, that sounds great. And when would you guys be taking applications for getting on the waitlist for those units and others people in the community? Wondering about the project and just wondering if you guys have a timeline for when you would expect to be opening that up.
So we we will be, you know, opening and and continue our communications through the project to make sure the community is updated. But we we will, it'll be closer to, you know, when we have a bill anticipated completion date. Probably be projecting out a year before that so that there's not too much, you know, getting on the waitlist and then attrition, which we have to go and and find out who's still on the waitlist a year is sort of the amount of time that that it makes sense that those that apply are going to be still in the community by the time we're ready to.
Awesome. One last question with the twenty two unit building. Is that can be all one bedroom apartments like Bridge Creek? Or does that have a range of sizes?
That one is a range of sizes, definitely recognizing that the one bedrooms met a specific need, but now that we're expanding our scope to, you know, meet the community level needs and and we're going to be looking at having a portfolio of several hundred units. We we want that to reflect the need of the community. And so the bottom eight units right now are intended to serve seniors, so they'll have external external door access from the ground floor. And then the second two levels will have a range of size units.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Any other comments, questions? Councilor Palmer, that comes from them.
Yeah, just to follow up from Counselor Lucio. So the the contract. So when that gets awarded, is that a contract between the Housing Society and the design builder? Is the province? Is it a contract with the province or is it a combination?
The contract will be between ourselves and the builder.
Okay. And then the funding is coming from the province?
Funding from the province and that land will be leased to the society through the province.
Right, okay. And then the the assets. Maybe I'm going to too much detail. Be the provincial assets in the building or does it belong to the housing society?
They belong to the society, but sort of remit to the to the province if in any event, yeah, so they're.
Yeah, okay.
It's kind of a balance of those two. I wouldn't say that we 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 consider we are responsible for them.
Right.
But yeah, outright ownership, I wouldn't call it outright.
Right, okay, in that sense, right.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Lemon.
Thank you. Just a general comment. Thank you very much for the presentation, obviously. Exciting news to get updates on, you know, concrete things coming to the future. I just wanted to acknowledge the great work the volunteer board has done. Mr. Brooks Hill, Ms. Doyle, and Mr. Bernak, you're here. Ms. Southern was here earlier but had to leave. Just really really amazing group doing so much hard work for the community. And it's just really exciting to have them here and also thank the rest of the board for their contributions to the results. That some of the results that we're seeing coming up is really exciting. Thank you very much.
I I would just echo that real quickly. As as I learn more about the housing landscape around the province, the Bridge Creek apartments, there's those twenty four units being developed by a by a board that that was working is monumental and that really served to get us to where we are now. So couldn't have been done without a lot of hard work, starting starting before that even.
Great. Mr. Palmer.
Thank you. Thank you, Tahaa. I just want to extend a branch of support. We know it's challenging to meet these targets and we know that your non-for-profit board, like Counselor Orlando mentioned, is made up of volunteers. The issue of capacity always comes up. Are you prepared to not only build these units but to oversee and manage these units? Please remember that the city is here. We have some support services that we can offer, RCHS. We have staff. We have a very robust engineering department, planning department, finance. Just use the city. Invite us to to assist you as best we can because we are partners. So if you feel you're short on capacity and you need help, please reach out. I know we talked about this yesterday, but we want to see you succeed and we're throwing all our support behind you. But we know you're going to have some capacity challenges. Just remind yourselves that you have a good partner in the city and we will assist as best we can to find additional capacity and support if you need it as we move closer to twenty thirty, which is not that far away. So very pleased to see these projections. Thank you.
Much appreciated. And that was definitely felt through this this grant. The the support that that came to to now have service land on Oscar Street, each unit. A number, a number of policy initiatives that are driven by the planning department and support with the financial aspect from the city is also much appreciated. So you have yeah, you have a lot of folks for your staff.
Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Atia. Appreciate you coming in during the presentation and and your support crew. Pam and Peter and Mike. Appreciate that. Terrell's here. Thank you again. And thank you for what you're doing for our community. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, council, I would like to move on and I'm reading this right. I'd like our motion to go in camera pursuant to section ninety point one, A, E, and K of the community charter. So I want to make that motion. Counselor Lucio, Counselor Orlando, all in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you. We'll take a few minute break and come back in camera.